That's with, um, public appearances. Uh, so that's our first item after you call the meeting to order, is we'll do public appearances. And, uh, or after the pledge of allegiance. Yes, yeah, so that'll be on the public appearances. Um, time limit. If you want, you can summarize.
You do it after our call.
It's typically here, I missed it, I'm sorry. Agenda templates have been changing. No, thank you, I, yes, I won't miss it next.
Meeting of the City of Carmel by the Historic Resources Board to order for Tuesday, October twenty eighth. Roll call, please.
Board member Dyer.
Here.
Board member Gualtieri.
Here.
And board member Boris.
Okay, um, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, next on the agenda is public appearances, people may speak on items that are not on the agenda. And, uh, anybody online or in the, in the assembly here that would like to speak on matters not on the agenda? Okay. So moving on to announcements, and I believe we're adding the director's report, report to that, so.
Yes, I'm proud to report that I'm sitting in for Catherine, she finally had her baby after two years being pregnant. Seemed like it, um, baby boy, um, and, uh, there was a picture shared, I believe, in the newsletter two weeks ago. She's doing well, baby's doing well. Um, we have, um, city council next week and will be discussing water allocation as well as a housing element, uh, public review. And, um, I believe that is all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements from board members? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, we have two items on the agenda, the, the regular minutes for the September fifteenth meeting and the adoption of the twenty twenty six Historic Resources Board calendar for next year, so. Did anyone have a chance to review that? Go ahead, Catherine.
Well, I remember, uh, there is some rule, I, I was not at the last meeting, but I believe that, that there is a rule that you can vote on the, uh, meeting minutes. Even though you weren't there, you don't have to abstain, I don't know if that's true.
That is correct.
Question.
Is that correct? Okay, so even though I wasn't there, since I've read them and I can vote.
I think we should, um, maybe continue the adoption of the calendar since we were missing two members and we have time to do that, so maybe they have issues with some of the dates, we can, we won't know until we have them here.
That's a good point.
So I'd recommend.
Then I'll just make a motion, unless you want to. Make a motion to approve the minutes of September fifteenth.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Board member Dyer.
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri.
Yes.
And board member Boris.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to public hearings, uh, the first public hearing item, uh, I, I'm trying to remember exactly Shelby, how we do this, it, since we do not have a quorum, um, we'll move on to the next on the agenda. Simple as that? Okay. So the next on the agenda is DS twenty five one oh three, Delmar Carmel, consideration of a determination of consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards, for an application for construction of a four hundred and eight square foot accessory dwelling unit, fenestration changes on the main house and the existing detached garage and associated site improvements on the George Graft House located on Scenic Road four southeast of Eighth in the R one district and the beach overlay. Staff report, please.
One moment, just getting the screen set up. Good afternoon, board members. We'll be covering DS twenty five one oh three, Delmar Carmel, for a determination of consistency. Little background, we did see this, uh, this property a little bit earlier this year for some other work, as we discussed on the site tour. Uh, all work was determined to be consistent with Secretary of Interior Standards, this is the George Graft House on Scenic Road, it was a M J Murphy property built in nineteen twenty nine and was determined to be significant under criteria three. Uh, it is a Spanish eclectic style house and it was added to the inventory in nineteen ninety nine. Character defining features are listed on the screen, three-story, L-shaped, uh, misch, mission tile, hip and gable roofs, two-story polygonal tower, um, chimneys on the north and west elevation, um, Spanish eclectic revival style. Um, so, this project, with a proposed work was reviewed based off the Secretary of Interior Standards. Um, the historic consultant that was contracted by the city determined that the project is consistent with standards one, two, three, five, six, seven, nine, and ten, and that four and eight were not applicable. Project description, a new four hundred and eight square foot ADU at the rear of the property, fenetra, fenestration changes to the main property and the garage, some alterations to the garage, um, including a roofline alteration, there'll be a removal of some site coverage to accommodate the ADU, a resurfacing of the driveway and some wall and fence changes. Standard one, um, based off of the report from the city contracted consultant, the alterations, uh, will retain the building's use and meets the standard. It will not be changing from a residential use. Standard two, uh, the project, the, um, won't affect the historic nature and the historic materials for the George Graft House. There's just minor changes that will be affecting mostly nonhistoric portions of the property. And, uh, the defining features will be retained. So the standard has been deemed to be met. Standard three, uh, the project does not add any conjectural features or elements, um, and meets the standard because of that. There won't be any confusion as to the character defining features or what is or is not historic. The standard, standard four is one of the two that does not apply to this project, so there's no concerns there. Standard five, uh, the, uh, remaining character defining features will be retained and rehabilitated for any changes that are being made to window fenestrations and things of that nature. So standard five is met. Standard six is regarding, uh, deteriorated historic features. Um, there will be some, uh, rehabilitation taking place at the property that all comply with the standards, and so standard six has been met. Standard seven, the physical treatment to repair the existing wood detailing and stucco cladding will be taken in the gentlest means necessary, and the standard has been met as well. Standard eight, another standard that does not apply, so, um, no concerns there. Standard nine is where we get into a little bit more of the details, um, you can see, uh, that it's regarding new additions and exterior alterations or new construction. For the primary house, uh, there'll be some wood-framed fixed sash, um, fix, fixed pane sashes, some repair that'll be done, um, and to the windows and the sash themselves. Uh, this part of the building was previously, uh, altered, so it meets the standard. Uh, as for the garage, you can see these images of the proposed north and the existing north elevation of the garage. Uh, the alterations are, actually return the garage to period-appropriate system and the roofline alterations are appropriate and won't cause any, uh, negative impact to the historic resource and meet the standards. As for landscaping features and gates, um, the landscaping and hardscape were nonhistoric and, uh, all standards are being met with the work that is being done. Standard ten, uh, is regarding new additions, uh, and adjacent or related construction, so here's, uh, a picture of the south elevation of the proposed ADU. It's located at the rear of the property and is, uh, not very visible from the street or from adjacent properties, and it's within the scale of the property, uh, and uses similar materials so that it fits in with the character of the property. Um, if any of these as part of the standard were removed or modified, it would not affect the historic, uh, integrity of the property and therefore meets the standard. So with that, staff recommends that the board adopt the resolution as presented by staff. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions of staff? I have a question, so with ADUs on historic properties, what kind of, if any discretionary review is there, designer review? I mean, how does the city interpret that?
It is, um, a little bit tricky, uh, they do have state protections, but there's also similar protections for historic resources. Uh, so those concerns are balanced and weighed when reviewing projects that want to add an ADU to historic property. And I believe that, um, from my understanding, uh, ADUs, the, the review that, i- the extent of the review would be if it has any deleterious effects on the historic property itself, and that's the extent of the review. So we're not giving design feedback or design standards to the ADU as we would for typical additions or accessory structures who are making sure that the ADU would not negatively affect a historic resource.
Which could relate to design compatibility.
It could.
Possibly.
Potentially, and we've had some instances.
I'm just, yeah, I was curious, because I was a little bit, as you talked about gray, since the state law seems to usurp a lot of that.
It is a, it is a tricky one, so it's always a, a balance.
The other general question I had was for historic properties with, there is nonconforming site coverage. I'm curious whether, if there's some existing site coverage that was deemed possibly incompatible or, I don't want to use the word deleterious, but incompatible with historic resource. Uh, would that be able to be removed and replaced? I mean, that's a sit, question for the city policy of how they review it, I know the current policy is that you can't remove anything un- unless you make the entire site nonconforming, but.
Well, um, we, you couldn't add anything unless you make the site compliant, you can always remove site coverage when you're noncompliance. Specifically if it's nonhistoric site coverage, if there's some Carmel stone patio.
Replace it.
You can't replace it, yes, and that is true for the historic resource also, if there was, uh, a site that had excess site coverage and it was not historic site coverage, it couldn't be replaced with something that would be uh, more in line with the architecture if the site was out of compliance.
Not be.
It could not be, if the site was out of compliance with site coverage.
There's life, health, and safety issues involved.
Then there may be a reasonable accommodation request remain.
So that, you would have to take it up under reasonable combination?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless there is something like for the ADU, they were allowed to add a, um, landing that is, uh, the minimum landing required by the building code for access for health and safety, so things of that nature.
Okay. More site coverage issues to come.
All good questions.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, is the representative here, architect and client representative, owner representative?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Nellander, architect on the project. Um, I concur with staff's analysis, um, you know, we feel like we've done, uh, everything we could to respect the old, uh, the historic resource. Uh, and I think the, uh, changes, uh, that we're making and the, um, the work we're doing on the project will give it another hundred years of, you know, life, so we, we feel like it's, uh, we're, we're doing the right thing by that house.
Okay, any questions of the architect? Okay, thanks, Eric. Anyone else wishing to address the board, I see Mr. Seavey approaching the dais.
Kent Seavey, Pacific Grove, a question relative to the ADU. It's my understanding and Pacific Grove, it's their understanding that the ADU doesn't exist visually within the context of an historic property if it's detached. And you can't deal with it in terms of asking for, uh, diff, you know, uh, uh, some kind of, uh, differentiation but character to the original building. Uh, can you explain that a little bit? Uh, the only time that it seems to be the, when you use a hyphen because you're connecting your utilities to the ADU from one of those buildings, that it can be either, uh, deck or a clear space, which could be a glazed passageway. I'd like some clarification on that, if y- you sound like you know what you're doing, so. What do you guys do? Is that okay to ask that, because it's part of, we're all kind of scratching your heads on that.
I, since I asked the question originally, I guess I should allow it.
Was your, your question specific to cover?
The ADU, that, I understand from the way the Pacific Grove people handle it, the ADU is a standalone, you can't think about the historic properties adjacent to. Uh, it, it's, it's got its own life. Uh, and, except I think when it's connected in some physical way, uh, because of the utilities being employed, uh, from the one building to the next building, and, uh, right now, uh, you know, the business of attachment is a big issue, what happens within that context, and that's worth a week's conversation. But I'm just interested, the state says you can't, you know, the ADU goes, you, you just do it.
So, um, the city, it being entirely within the coastal zone, there is a coastal savings clause in state law, um, for ADUs and, um, the historicity of, of the city, there, that's one of the resources, um, that is protected through our local coastal program.
I'm sorry.
Our local coastal program gives us certain protections even, um, relative to state ADU law.
It does, it gives you room to play.
There's still a balance.
Would be in the same.
I am, um, I, I actually don't know, I, I believe there's only a portion of PG that's in the coastal zone and the other areas is outside of the coastal zone.
Still a mystery. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else wishing to address the board on this particular application? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the.
We have, uh, one online.
Okay, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Yeah, are the, um, ADUs being used for short-term rentals? And also I had the same question about site coverage. Uh, uh, the property has significant site coverage. That was my whole question.
Okay, let staff, I guess, address that.
Thank you for your question, um, we don't have any information regarding the intent for the use of the ADU, uh, as is the rules in all of Carmel, short-term rentals, uh, or transient rentals are prohibited in the R one zone. So if it is going to be rented out, it'll be for a minimum of thirty days. Uh, as for site coverage, I'm sorry, can you clarify, what was your site coverage question?
Um, the site is significantly covered with the house and the driveway and the garage space and the pool and the pool deck and I just wondered, uh, can you get a variance for that much coverage, like, can neighbors do the same thing? That's a lot of coverage.
The site is currently, uh, existing nonconforming with regards to site coverage and the only proposed added site coverage would be the minimum required for a safe landing for the ADU door. Um, besides that, no new coverage is being allowed to be added, um, you can apply for a variance for site coverage, but, um, there are certain findings that need to be met in order for that variance to be approved.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to address the board on this application? Online or otherwise, okay? With that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board, any discussion among?
Well, I, I'm, uh, if I may speak, uh, first, I'm satisfied, uh, with the, uh, the fact that no original materials are going to be impacted. I think the deterioration of the, some of the wood and the, the stucco, uh, will be rehabbed, which is good. And the one window on the balcony to be replaced, uh, when we were there, I understood why, since it's leaking like a sieve. So, uh, looking at the historic assessment, uh, I think the site alterations, uh, won't have any uh, effect on the historic walls and the changes are minimal, so I would support the project.
Okay. Um, yes, I think it's pretty straightforward and I support the project as well, so I'll entertain a, a motion.
And, uh, do we want to pass the resolution too?
Yeah, it's a, for the determination of consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards.
So, uh, I'm, also support the, uh, resolution number two oh two five, is that XXX? HRB, I don't know what that means. Uh, that the, um, issuing a determination of consistency with the Secretary of Standards and, uh, that we're, uh, supportive of this project.
Okay, with that, I'll propose a roll call.
Board member Dyer.
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri.
Yes.
And board member Boris.
Yes.
Well, motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have good luck.
Okay. So moving on to HE twenty five two four two, French. Consideration of the, the removal of the historic unit house from the Carmel Inventory of Historic Resources located at Torres Street four, northwest of Eighth in the R one zoning district, staff report, please.
As you said, this is HE two five two four two, French, for the removal of the unit house from the historic inventory. The unit hu- house is located Torres four, northeast of Eighth Avenue, it is a Hugh Comstock house from nineteen thirty four. It was found significant under criteria three as part of the historic inventory, um, survey that was done in two thousand and four. Uh, it was determined to be significant due to architecture as an experiment in affordable housing design by, uh, Mr. Hugh Comstock. Um, Carmel Municipal Code, section seventeen thirty two oh seven D, has two points for, uh, that need to be addressed when, uh, viewing of, a meeting regarding removing an item from the inventory. An insen- intensive survey is needed to be, um, prepared by a qualified professional under contract with the city to determine if the project is eligible for the inventory. If the new, um, survey determines that it has lost integrity and recommends removal, uh, the survey shall document why. Um, and there should be substantial evidence as to the loss of integrity and from how it was lost and if it was lost prior to the previous DPR, why that was missed. So, uh, the applicants provided a letter from Heritage Services Consulting on August of twenty twenty five, uh, in which they determined that the nineteen ninety four addition was overlooked in the original survey and then the nineteen fifty nine addition was, uh, s- caused substantial loss of integrity. Uh, these two int- uh, additions seem to be what they, they're indicating, however, the largest contributors to the loss of historic integrity for the property. Uh, the city contracted a consultant, Meg Clovis, for a phase two report stating that the unit house does not retain substantial integrity and therefore cannot convey the reason it is significant, the unit house is no longer eligible for inclusion. The points that she stated, the main, um, points would be, again, the south wing from fifty nine and the middle wing from nineteen ninety four, and she stated, um, that it has lost its integrity. Um, there are two options for how to proceed with this property, um, it can be if the board, uh, approves the request to remove the unit house from the historic inventory, or two, uh, to determine that more evidence is needed regarding the integrity. There was, uh, as noted by Ms. Clovis in her report, the front porch was enclosed, uh, formerly the front porch, it's the one on the north side of the property prior to, or, eh, after two thousand and four. Um, so if the Historic Resource Board determines that that is the main loss of integrity was from the enclosing of that porch, you can request, um, proof from the applicants that that was permitted work. Um, but if you believe that the nineteen fifty nine and nineteen ninety four additions are the most significant reasons for the loss of integrity, um, you can choose to have it be removed from the inventory. With that, staff recommends that you adopt a resolution as presented by staff, finding the project, that the, uh, historic evaluation is, um, deemed not a project under CEQA and approving the request to remove it from the inventory. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you, Jake. Uh, is the applicant representative here, Mr. Lombardo?
Afternoon, Anthony Lombardo, on behalf of the Frenchies who are here with me. Raise hands. Please, if you could put on, um, I agree with the staff report almost completely. Uh, the only thing I don't agree with, according to Ms. Clovis and to Dr. Jones, that, uh, porch enclosure was done in the nineteen fifties and we didn't actually, we didn't actually look at that side of the house, but I walked around there afterwards and there is a very old, true divided light window in the enclosed porch, was definitely not put there in the nineteen nineties. Uh, it's a, a, a large multi-pane divided light window that's very old, so, um, I just, I believe that what Dr. Jones and, and Meg Clovis said is probably accurate, that that porch enclosure was done in the nineteen fifties, not in the early two thousands, just because of the material, uh, that appears in the, on that, so if we could go to the next slide. Yeah, that's good. Um, that's, that's the house, uh, when it was moved there, I think from looking at the house, you could see it would be absolutely impossible to move that house that's there now onto this site, as opposed to the small rectangular house, uh, that Hugh Comstock built and then moved on to the site, it wasn't actually built on the site. Um, that porch is the area that's enclosed and on the north-facing facade of what was the porch is a large divided light window, which definitely is old. Uh, next slide, please. You can see the, the area of the original house on the right with that bay window treatment and where the old porch was, where you can see the, the siding was extended. Uh, so everything we see to the left of the rectangle has been added in the various different remodelled, remodelings and additions to the home. Next slide, please. Constructed in thirty four, according to Clovis and Jones, fifty nine added, uh, the bedroom and bathroom and changed the front entrance of the house, and then a ninety four addition added the other elements and added to the garage, next slide, please. Yeah, this is from their reports, fifteen nine addition, the nineties addition, uh, in the middle of fifties addition, top and bottom, and the garage addition at the back. Uh, Dr. Jones' conclusion, which I'm sure you saw in the reports, uh, that it was no longer eligible, say, next slide, please. And you're, the city's consultant who reached, uh, the same conclusion, next slide, that might be it. Um, we had a few of these, I'll show you, I'll give you my, show you my age now. In, in the early two thousands, when the city came up with the list, there were a few of these, this one didn't happen to come to light then, but we went through a dozen or twenty of these where there was additional information that wasn't known to Kent Seavey at the time that the, uh, Ken, I don't know if you remember, we were at the city council at the one thirty AM one morning and sat through their entire horrible agenda. sat through their entire horrible agenda until early into the wee hours of Wednesday. And I presented the information and Kent stood up and said, well, if I'd have known that information, I never would have said it was historic. And I th- I said, thanks Kent, I wish you'd have said that five hours ago instead of having to sit through the state of the city address by the then council or argument. So anyway, um thank you very much. Uh it appears that both the city's consultant and uh ours uh agree that the changes to this home are obviously significant and it no longer conveys the integrity of the original Comstock uh unit design, which I guess was, as staff mentioned, an experiment in how to build a simple rectangle that you could move to homes and move on to properties and um have an affordable or build an affor- have an affordable housing unit. I I doubt Mr. Comstock would recognize the prices of homes in Carmel now. But uh thank you very much. The, the Frenches are here again, if you'd like to ask them any questions, but we support uh what I think is the staff recommendation that it be removed, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other people wishing to address the board on this application? Mr. Seavey.
Kent Seavey, when the original study was done, there were three thousand houses looked at basically in town. Every town, it was the three-year job. Uh when we completed the three-year job, we sent a document to the state indicating, please, go through this carefully and if you see a problem, tell us, remove it. They removed twelve houses from that original survey. As uh the attorney said, uh later on, in this particular instance where we got to spend a long night with the city council, uh we had produced photographs of the building where there'd been an addition showing very clearly that the original building was intact. It was shown to the planning director, we came to the meeting. He had twelve more photographs done in the same day that the owners had not given us. So in this instance, I looked to the, we spent a lot of time looking through the records, didn't find the ninety-six. So the other one, uh we felt it was okay with that one, because they, it's a unit house. It was a project by Comstock to try and find a way to limit the cost of building, but also to reflect the character of Carmel. And that was kind of his halfway shot at uh the uh minimal traditional, with a little jazz. But I agree, it should come off the list.
Uh Kent?
Yes, ma'am?
I uh, I think uh, I'm just surmising here, that Comstock was moving slowly away from the storybook style and he hadn't really quite come to the post-Adobe style yet. And maybe this was a transitional and reflective of the depression, uh the fact-
I think that it was very much so.
People were suffering.
Also, at that time, there were several houses by mail coming in to Carmel, most of them were minimal traditional.
I had the opportunity to uh see the house when it was on the market sometime last year, I think it was, or this, earlier this year. And I was uh was there when Brian Congleton, the architect uh who we've worked with here in the city, also visited it and he was able to show me the exact place in the house where it had been able to be put back together again, which was very exciting. And uh I think, how, how big would you say estimated the initial the small, the original part of this, how many square feet you think that rectangular part would be?
Well, I I think probably i- i- he could have moved on a flatbed truck, frankly.
Yeah.
Uh and again, this was an experiment.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I I also had the privilege of peer revealing your survey. And I don't, I never saw that this didn't qualify, there were about twenty red flags uh that were brought to the State Office of Historic Preservation for comment. And uh I didn't realize that some had been removed, I didn't follow through. But you did a very good job and I think uh this one just slipped through the cracks, it's an important, it's an important structure, it has a great history, uh and I appreciate what you've said.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. French has some more detail on the, on the enclosure of the porch, she actually has the old plans, so she can provide you with that information.
Hello?
Well, I should have brought my computer.
Can you just state your name, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara French.
Thank you.
Um I should have brought my computer because I have the files from the city that show that the the door and the side was converted in the fifties, but I do have one on my phone that shows it already done in the nineties. I don't know if that's helpful, but. Oh, okay. I just ha- just happened to have it with me.
Would it be appropriate to ask you, are you planning to demolish the house?
Oh, no, no, we do not. Um we've lived um in a few different places in Carmel and I know the street very well. Um I'm friends with a few of the people in the street. Um no, um we don't plan on putting a second story or anything like that, um maybe adding a bedroom on and maybe having an outside dining area if we can. Um I'd like to do some stuff internal as well. Um the dining room area that was done in the nineties, um and the bedroom that was done in the fifties, they don't, they didn't do a full A-frame, so it's not exposed, I'd like to expose that. Um and um, yeah, we're not going to tear it down, absolutely not. What I'd like to do is make it, I'm actually a builder myself, what I'd like to do is make it um more consistent. Um when you walk into the, if you've been inside, it feels very lovely and woody and old. And then as you walk through the house, it kind of loses some of its integrity, I think. So that is my intention, uh this is our retirement home. Um my parents live in Pacific Grove, um we love the area very much. Um so we've tried for many years to buy a place, so this is the first place we were able to build, so we will definitely not tear it down, absolutely not.
Thank you very much.
Nor will we sell it, this is our retirement home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, right where your finger is.
Try the corner there, right?
And that's the, um, yeah, right there, that was the original entrance, and this is just from the ninety-four. And then um the front doors, kind of current front doors there, yeah. But I do have the plans at home that show it in the fifties, but this is stamped nineteen ninety-four and this was the plans that were used to do the large um dining room, middle section.
Yeah, you see it there.
And they extended the garage just a little bit in that, in that um plans.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that's kind of cool.
It's a fun experiment. Okay, anyone else wishing to address the board on this application? Anybody online?
Oh, if you have one hand raised.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Dyer and, and members of the HRB, my name is Cindy Lloyd. Um I had the uh opportunity to help the latest tenant move out of that house. And she did so because the house was riddled with rats. It has nothing to do with what's uh before you today, but I just thought I would add that. I'm glad that the owner is there. Um when I observed the house on the south side, it was right next to a fence with a whole bunch of ivy. And as we all know, rats love ivy. At any rate, this is just an anecdotal remark and I found it difficult moving things uh for the tenant going over this little hump bridge over the um decorative uh water feature. Um so I, I hope in the future that it might be, the, the landscaping might be more integrated with the house. Um but that's completely anecdotal, has nothing to do, but I would just offer it for interest, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Online or here? Does any of our hand up again? No? Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Do you want to go first, uh Bob Bobby?
I don't really have anything to say, other than I'm, well, I guess I agree with the findings of staff.
Okay. Well, this is a tough one, because uh, you know, it it's a a house done by a notable designer and uh he had the idea to help people during a very difficult period of time in our country. Uh he was very clever in erecting this in a place in town where everybody could see it and get ideas for how to build an affordable house. And now we're sort of at the last straw. I I I admit, when I saw during the um open houses, I went there several times. I fantasized about buying it and fixing it and I thought it was just a terrific house. Uh I also am sad to say, I thought the, especially the nineties addition, just seemed to kind of ruin it for me. Uh and uh then when I've learned now through this uh, the information we've gathered from our consultants, it just seems like um the loss of integrity is obvious and uh I think the addition in the nineties really compromised the property to the point where it just is, that can't stand up for itself in terms of integrity. So reluctantly, I would support uh the idea of removing it from the inventory. But I hope there's some way that perhaps the owners might consider um going to the Carmel Heritage Society, taking pictures uh of the important features that may, we may not always have. Uh it's just sort of a sad day in a, in the sense because of the importance of Comstock. He and Murphy uh were my heroes as far as our history is concerned. But um I, I, I see the reality of this.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah, I agree, I think, you know, the, the core significance of the house came from that rectangle and that original idea of having something that's inexpensive that was able to be moved from different sites and prefabricated and none of the additions after that were done per the Secretary of Interior Standards, as we would look at them. And so you really cannot understand the original, what the original was. And especially the ninety-four addition with the big addition coming out at you from, from the main body of the houses uh yeah, completely loses any sort of sense of the original. So I would support also removing it from the inventory and would entertain a motion to do so.
Okay, uh I would uh offer a Historic Resource Board Resolution number twenty-two-four. That this is not, uh no, that isn't the right wording, let's see. Approving a request for the removal of the unit house from the Carmel Historic Inventory.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
To the chair.
Oops, sir.
Sorry, just a point of clarification prior to you um making your um vote. The uh draft resolution should um identify twenty-two-five instead of twenty-two-four, just for the record.
Okay. So noted, and roll call, please.
Board member Dyer?
Yes.
Board member Gualtieri?
Yes.
And board member Boris?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all, good luck with it. Okay. Going back to the we have our director's report, so any future agenda items? Okay, and as we discussed, because we don't have a quorum on the removals project, uh we will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Eric, short and sweet.
Yes, there we go.
That's a sad story about the little unit house.
It is.